Regular meeting at the Batavia City Council from Monday, August 17th, 2020. And to begin the meeting, I would ask that you all please rise and join me in the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight is, once again, the City Council meets in its regular session. We meet in an hour of great challenge, both for our community and for our state and our nation. There are many budding problems that the government at all levels are trying to deal with, and there are many people being impacted by the issues at hand. And we just ask for guidance and understanding and a national blessing that America can find its way and that we, as a country, can rise up and reach new states of progress and improvement as we go forth into the new, this coming century or coming decade. Tonight, as always, we want to ask for a special blessing on the City Council and that they each be granted understanding and vision as they act on the items before them. And we know that each member of the council is here to do what is in their own hearts and minds is the best interest of the community, and for that, we are ever so thankful. We also tonight ask for a blessing on those in our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and all other men and women from our country who are serving these vital missions. As always, we want to finalize this by just asking for a blessing on our community, asking for good health and return to health for those who are, you know, under the weather at the moment. And know that as we begin the school year, we just ask that this be a very successful and progressive and innovative school community in Batavia, as I'm sure our teachers and administration of the school district will rise to the occasion and provide. We ask you all the understanding and cooperation of our community as we go forth in a very complex world that hopefully, at the end of the day, we will all be very, very proud to call our home. Amen. Alderman, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving to three. Kurt, please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Knop.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Ure.
Here.
Serone. McFadden.
Here.
So let the record reflect that the thirteen of the fourteen elected members of the City Council are present for tonight's meeting, and we have been told by Alderman Serone that he would not be able to be present tonight. Okay, so everybody's accounted for. I'm asked by our agenda to remind everyone to please speak into the microphones if you are going to be speaking tonight, as it is being recorded and broadcast by our friends at BATV. Moving then to item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman.
I, Your Honor, I'm aware of none.
Nothing. Okay, let's move then to item number six, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Chanset.
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for July 7th, 2020, July 14th, 2020, and July 28th, 2020. The building report for July 2020. Approvals: August 7th, 2020 payroll in the amount of $877,280.06. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $2,568,345.05. The City Council minutes for August 3rd, 2020. Resolution 20-96-R authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement amendment with the Illinois Department of Transportation related to maintenance traffic control devices. Ordinance 20-46 amending Title VIII, Chapter I of the municipal code related to interconnecting small photovoltaic systems. Resolution 20-95-R approving Task Order Number Six with Avent Energy Incorporated for financial analysis of electric utility purchase power cost. Resolution 20-99-R approving a contract with EX Square Technology for the design and engineering of communication shelter at the Paramount substation for an amount not to exceed $30,351.31. And Resolution 20-100-R approving a contract with Sergeant and Lundie for design and construction engineering services for the 34 KV breaker replacements at the northeast, southeast, and main substations for an amount not to exceed $309,862. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Knop for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kurt, please call the roll then.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ure.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, and none absent. Okay, moving to item seven on our agenda, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody tonight that wants to speak? Anybody on call? Okay. All right, moving then to item number eight is the reappointment of Robert Canushu to the Batavia Police Pension Board for a four-year term. Bob's already served three years in a previous term, so he's now up and running, and he's got a financial background, and I think he's a good guy to have on the pension board, although they don't have the money anymore, but they get to oversee how we award our pensions, I guess is the thing. So I'd ask for a motion of confirmation.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Rosado for the confirmation of the appointment to the Police Pension Board. Any discussion? Kurt, call the roll.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ure.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Motion's approved by a vote of thirteen yes, no, no, and none absent. Moving to item number nine, which is a proclamation which is being passed tonight simultaneously by both the Geneva and St. Charles City Councils along with ourselves, and we've set it up so that after it's passed, the proclamation will be published with the approvals of all three City Councils and signed by all three of the mayors. And this is the Tri-City Dementia Friendly Communities. Alderman Chanset, would you present this?
Your Honor, a proclamation, a dementia-friendly tri-city recognition proclamation, whereas the cities of St. Charles, Geneva, and Batavia have been designated as dementia-friendly communities, and whereas the tri-cities became dementia-friendly cities in 2020, and whereas every sixty-five seconds, someone develops Alzheimer's disease, a form of dementia, and by 2050, someone will develop the disease every thirty-three seconds. And whereas, in the United States, there are 5.8 million people living with Alzheimer's disease, unless a cure is found, it is estimated that as many as 14 million will have the disease by 2050. And whereas, Alzheimer's is the sixth-leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas 5.7 million individuals in the United States, 220,000 individuals in Illinois are living with Alzheimer's or a type of dementia. And whereas, more than 16 million Americans provide unpaid care for people with Alzheimer's and other dementias, providing over 18.5 billion hours of unpaid care, and in Illinois, more than half a million caregivers provided 668 million hours of unpaid care. And whereas, the Alzheimer's Association estimates the direct cost of caring for those with Alzheimer's to the United States to reach $1 trillion by 2050. And whereas, numerous local partners, experts, professionals, and residents are devoted to the success of dementia-friendly initiative. And whereas, the tri-cities offer their support to those living with dementia, and we also recognize those who care and provide it for them. Now, therefore, the mayors of the tri-cities, Raymond P. Rogina, Kevin R. Burns, and Jeffrey DeShelky, call upon the citizens to learn more about dementia as our partners work to create a local community where people living with dementia are supported to enjoy a high quality of life with meaning, purpose, and value. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the proclamation as presented. Any discussion? You know, obviously, I will be a signatory force on this, and I just want to publicly state my admiration for the group of folks who have set up the Tri-City Dementia Friendly Organization. It is, I think, a very needed and worthwhile effort by a bunch of very well-intentioned people, and I have the opportunity probably to visit. They meet almost monthly, and I probably go once or twice a year because they move their meetings around to various parts of the tri-cities. And I just want to say that it's a very worthwhile program, and I always, for whatever reason, get asked to say a few words about what's happening in Batavia and whatever. And from whatever town they're from, everybody has a lot of interest and appreciation of what's going on, so I just want to say that of all the things we are asked to do, this is one of the good ones, and I thank you all for your support of this. Kurt, call the roll.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ure.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knop.
Aye.
Motion's approved by a vote of thirteen yes, no, no, and none absent. All right, moving to item number ten is we have Sheri Wilcox with us, the Executive Director of Batavia Main Street. We're very honored to have you with us, Sheri, and let you give your little report.
Thanks for having me. First, I wanted to start with a thank you for River Street. I'm very thrilled to say that we have tables on River Street that are high-quality tables thanks to the rental from Funway, and we have lights in the trees, Christmas lights in the trees, and we have signage pointing people to where they need to park on Wilson Street and on Washington, directing them to where they need to park for North River Street. So I just want to say thank you for that. It does not go unnoticed. It's very much appreciated. We can hardly wait for the umbrellas to come that I know are on their way, and hopefully the festoon lighting to really complete that space, but it is appreciated. I wanted to give a special thank you to Scott and his team. Those tables were delivered, I know, on kind of a quick notice, and I know that that was not how they planned to end their afternoon that week, putting those heavy tables out. But, you know, they jumped to it, and it was really nice because all Beth and I really had to do was decide where they went and point, and his staff did all the heavy lifting, and we had all those tables out by dinner time. So we really do appreciate that and look forward to the rest of the improvements to that area on River Street. So we also added, some people may have seen, Main Street added some games to the street. So we have oversized checkers and oversized tic-tac-toe tables and a very large chess set, and people have been very thrilled with those. And despite the fact that somebody hijacked two of the pieces of our chess set, they remain a draw. You know, people come with their kids, the kids like to play with them. It gives mom and dad a chance to sit and relax while they eat, while the kids are busy, and I think it's been an excellent compliment to the River Street environment and to doing what we wanted to do to create a place that people really want to gather. So we're thrilled with that. And it was none too soon that we got those tables, as the park district has now gotten into partnership with the school district and needs those tables back for outdoor education. So very happy that you guys moved forward when you did and arranged that with Funway. They're much appreciated. Speaking of the businesses and the merchants, we got together with a group of merchants in Main Street, and out of that discussion came a new promotion, a mid-week, midday promotion to drive business downtown during lunchtime. So deemed the Thursday $10 Lunch Rush. Every Thursday from now through October, we've encouraged businesses, both restaurants and retail, to come up with $10 offerings between 11:30 and 1:30. So you get a $10 package lunch, or you've got items marked down to $10. You know, gift items for $10, fashion items for $10. And we put music on the street, on River Street and on Water Street. There were some kids' activities. We had a Hana artist out on River Street. And our first week was last week, and we're going to continue it. We got a couple more restaurants on board this week. So I encourage you, if you find yourself hungry or bored or both on a Thursday at lunchtime, to come down and get a good deal and stop in one of the shops and pick something up for yourself or a loved one and help our businesses out in the middle of the week because it's not just about what we do in the evenings, and a lot of our retail shops need a little help as well. Promotions like this one and like Second Fridays and like some of the other things we do become all the more important at this time when our traditional events, which always drove thousands of people into downtown, are often problematic. With that, I have to say that our Black Party Car Show and Taste of Batavia seems to no longer be a viable event for us. What had been approved at the end of Phase Three by the Department of Health, once we submitted our permitting to the city and city staff called on the Department of Health to get some clarification, it became clear that concerns had arisen in the recent weeks and restrictions had gotten tighter. So because our local business community had been so supportive and had tried to figure out things they could do in concert with that, we really wanted to do anything we could to try to make this happen, even with all the incredibly tight restrictions that were being placed on us in this last week. But unfortunately, it's just not, it's not a viable option at this time. Car shows in particular have been canceled officially by, of that sort anyhow. So we continue to move forward. We continue to be dedicated to bring people to downtown in safe, acceptable ways. We will be working at Main Street, our staff and our committees, to make the most of the opportunities we have and to look at our planning for the fall with an attitude toward what we can do and not what we can't. We owe that to our business community. We owe that to our residents who love this community and want to help celebrate it, and we will be as flexible and creative as possible going forward in this very strange and uncertain 2020. And then in closing, I'd just like to say, I know you guys are doing a lot. You're talking about some big grant money today. You're talking about some big moves in terms of bringing people to town long-term, but don't forget that what keeps our businesses alive are the little bits, and every little bit helps. So the big things are great, and we absolutely need them, but we also need people shopping at lunch. We also need people buying olive oil and buying a purse and buying a pound of coffee from a local retailer, getting a sandwich on a regular basis. The little bits that we give each and every week are the things that keep our businesses healthy and viable long-term. So I just encourage you to come out and give a little bit.
Any questions of our executive director? Well, while we have her standing here, I just want to, I talked to her for a moment before the meeting started, but I just want to share with the council some stuff that Laura and I have been dealing with the last six, eight days, I guess. And that's the fact that we have two restaurants and one entertainment venue that none of you, I don't think, know anything about. I haven't shared it with anybody as far as names, or I probably shouldn't say where they're at, where they're going to be right now. But it's an interesting time to have these conversations, and so this one group of people now have talked to me three times, and every time they talk to me, they're not from here, they're from down in central Illinois, but they're restaurant owners and they do it. And they're saying that they're looking around here, and they think that they see an exciting opportunity in Batavia where you could potentially invite people to come in here and have a meal or come for dinner or whatever, and what you could then do is have a quote-unquote "Batavia menu." And I said, "What do you mean by a Batavia menu?" Now, maybe three or four of us restaurants, or we could put out a menu and we could say, "Okay, you start here with a cocktail. Then you go here with an hors d'oeuvre or an appetizer. Then you walk someplace else and you have maybe your main course. And then maybe after that, you go someplace else and have dessert, and then maybe you find a venue where there's music or something going on, and you can have the conversation." And it, you know, you can involve five or six different restaurants, different ones, different nights, different times. And they're telling me, you know, between that and, you know, they say, you know, at a time of Great Depression in our country where a lot of things have slowed down, Batavia seems to be buzzing. You know, we're talking about building new things, and we're getting a lot of building permits, and we got our building department going crazy with all kinds of deals going on here. And so, and they were very complimentary toward Batavia Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce for what they said they felt was a very viable downtown situation with creative friendships was the description they gave me about how downtown Batavia seemed to be to them as they reached out and talked to Main Street or Chamber or other business people in the community. And I pointed out to them, I said, "Well, you know, I know we've got at least one more restaurant in the works that's not open yet, and we've got another one that's down at the old library up here, which is having conversations with us about doing something." I'm not sure yet we quite know what they're going to do there, but I think they may be somewhat in the entertainment business there, too. So I'm very excited about what I'm seeing happening in downtown Batavia, and, you know, there's a lot of people that are very high on the place, and, you know, there's a lot of people sitting here at the table, certainly those on, some of them aren't sitting here with me, but certainly those of you who are involved in the boardwalk shops, that really brought a flash of interest into downtown Batavia and keeps continuing to do so. I've now got two of my mayors in the region have asked me if they can come over and take me to lunch someday, if I'll walk them over and show them the boardwalk shops. So I told them, "Well, you got to come on the day when they're open because that's where you really see it." But, so I mean, we're getting attention out there, and we're doing stuff that, you know, I was with several mayors, and one said, "Jeff, I want to come and see your boardwalk shops." And another mayor sitting, the gal says to him, "What's a boardwalk shop?" And so they said, "Oh," she says, "Well, maybe I want to come and see that, too." And so I recently had an entertaining conversation with the mayor, Glenn Ellen, who is a friend of mine, and she was going to be the next opening of a Raising Cain Chicken Restaurant. And she had a lot of questions of me because she wasn't quite sure what she was getting. And so I haven't had a chance, I think it's open over there now. It's on Roosevelt Road, she told me, right near the center part of, you're going to downtown, Glenn Ellen. I'm anxious to talk to her and find out because I gave her the history of what we went through in Batavia, and I said, "Be ready for the grand opening." They had about 350 people there, and bands were playing and everything else. And she says, "Well, they got a little bit of an area on where they are." She said, "I'm just afraid we're going to have spillover parking." And I said, "Well, you'll probably have a backup on the drive-through window if you're going to have anything." So we're kind of paving the way here for new things to happen, and others are watching us with great interest, and as the mayor, I'm very proud of that fact. And I just publicly want to thank Sheri for all she's doing at Main Street and, you know, Margaret over at the Chamber and all your staffs, that you really are making a difference in a very positive way for Batavia, so thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something, too, please?
Yes, sir.
You know, Sheri, when you guys came before us a week or so ago, I just, I was just very impressed with all the owners, the business owners, how they were united, and they had, they shared concern for one another, and they were considerate of one another and their successors. And I would think that has to do with leadership of Main Street also and to all the businesses themselves. So I thought that was quite impressive for the people on River Street and on Main Street that they'll, they stick together and try to work through creatively whatever problems come up against them. So I just wanted to.
Thank you. I'll be honest with you. I feel like a part of that, but I don't think I can take credit for it. Batavia is a tight-knit community of people who help each other out. I think if you go and talk to any business owner who's recently moved their business here from another downtown, they will tell you that one of the reasons they came here is because of the welcome they got, not just from the real estate community or the economic development community, but from the other business owners, even business owners who are in the same field as them, who are sort of competitors and compadres, if you will. I would like to add one thing that we haven't formally announced yet, but local media, some of our local media does Reader's Choice Awards. You might be familiar with the Best of the Fox Awards, and West Suburban Living does a Reader's Choice Awards, and downtown Batavia won in the Best Retail Community. So sometimes when you're close to something, you might not realize what you've got, but the close-knit community of shopkeepers and restaurants and retailers in our downtown added in with the boardwalk shop addition and some of the new retailers that we've had come to town in the last year has created an environment that people like to be in. You know, COVID be damned, people like to be in Batavia when things are good and things are open, and that has proven itself because these are votes from regular people. These are votes from the folks who read those publications. They like it here. They want to come back. So anything that we can do at Batavia Main Street or, you know, as citizens in general, as city council, to continue to make that the way people feel going forward during this time and after this time, I hope that you'll join me in that effort.
All right, anybody else? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into business at hand. Item number 11, which is ordinance 20-45, major amendment to a planned development overlay for one Washington-place mixed-use development at 111 through 133 East Wilson Street and 20 North River Street and 1 North Washington. And who are we going to give this to?
I can take it, Your Honor.
Almody, okay. I didn't know if you were not being here, if you wanted to handle it. Go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, I can just bring it up to you and produce it, and then you can direct.
Okay.
This is ordinance 20-45 as described, which would amend the prior ordinance regarding this development, 18-29 and 17-15. This latest iteration is coming before us. The background is in March, the developer came to us advising there was insufficient time on TIF V to fund this project, making it impossible to secure the financing. It was then voted upon to seek an extension for TIF V, and as a result of that process, one of the taxing bodies voted it down and thereby started a new process, which was to de-TIF, TIF V, and establish TIF VI. This did go before the plan commission on July 1st, and they approved four of the five conditions and tied on the fifth. If Joel would like to go into the details.
I am not sure that Joel is on the line.
Okay. If Joel is not on the line, then I will turn it back over to the mayor to direct.
Yeah, Joel, I don't believe is actually on the line. Scott's here. I can answer any questions you may have.
Go ahead.
Regarding the proposal.
Oh, Scott just said he can answer any question.
Scott, would you go ahead? Did we have any questions to Scott? And Joel was on, we think, but he's not?
No, he's not on, but Scott is on and can answer any questions about the plan commission's recommended approval.
So then I guess I ask for a motion then for ordinance So then I guess I ask for a motion then for ordinance 20-45, major amendment as planned unit development overlay for one Washington Place mixed-use development.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of ordinance 20-45. The major amendment to the planned unit overlay for one Washington Place mixed-use development, 111 through 133 East Wilson and 20 North River Street and 1 North Washington. LLC is the applicant. Any further discussion? Alderman.
Yeah, I kind of made this comment last week, just want to make sure it's on the record again, that I have nothing against Shodene Development. I have nothing against building some apartments and definitely increasing the density in downtown housing. I just think that the building itself doesn't fit the character and it is too large, given all the other circumstances that are available in Batavia right now. So I'm going to vote no on this.
Anybody else? Alderman Beck?
I have a few questions that I'd like some clarification on the change that was made today about the reverting back to, whether it reverts back to city ownership if they do not finish the project or if it stays in their ownership. Can you explain what that means?
Sure. So that particular provision was what would happen if the developer was to default in, and specifically was not able to complete the project. What we have a performance bond in place for is to be able to complete the project. Ultimately, that is there because in order to pay the bond payments, it's necessary for the project to be completed, for the apartments to be generating revenue, and for the project to have the equalized assessed value that creates the incremental tax from which we would be making that bond payment. So as you recall, first we look to the tax increment to pay the bond. If the tax increment is insufficient, then the developer has the opportunity to either make a gap payment to satisfy that payment amount or we have the ability by an ordinance that has already been passed to implement an SSA, Special Supplemented Area Tax, that would cover any deficiency in the EAV. But all of that becomes, it becomes necessary for us to make sure that the project can be completed. We need access to the redevelopment site in order to perform the work to complete the project in that circumstance, but we certainly don't require ownership. And I think it might put us in a difficult position if, when the developer defaults, then the ownership of that property reverts back to us because we would then have to pay the taxes on the property and/or any SSA and have to make the bond payment as well.
So we, we have a, what was the, one of the first bonds you mentioned to complete the project?
Yeah, a performance bond.
Who are we paying to complete the project? We try to then attract another developer who does not take ownership of the site but finishes it?
We would likely take the plans that exist and hire a general contractor to complete the project, not another developer.
How does, how does the language in this, and I'm sorry, I didn't have time to go and do all the research because I spoke, I wasn't able to go to the, to the field trip to Oswego and see it myself. I apologize for that. But I did speak to the city administrator and they had said that they were very careful to get the language in their contract to, to, to gain ownership should, should the project not finish because they didn't want to have, have happened what happened in Aurora, where a project is never built, but it stays in the developer's name and then it just sits empty for who knows how long. And that they said banks don't like to approve that, but they did and they got the project pushed through with that assurance.
So in that case, the bank was willing to have an opportunity to complete the project prior to the city being willing to, having to step in and complete the project. The same is not true in this case. The lender is not interested in taking responsibility for completing the project. And therefore, should the developer not step in, not complete the project and is in default, we will enter into that access agreement between the developer and the lender and the city. And what we really need is, is access. We don't need ownership, but we need the access in order to be able to complete the project. And then we still have a private party that owns the project. And that private party is going to be responsible for paying the tax bill. They're going to be responsible for electing if they wish to make a gap payment. Otherwise, the SSA would be implemented and they would be responsible for paying the SSA.
And who is, who is the, the private party making the tax payment?
Whomever is the owner at the time. So the developer is going to issue a, is going to get a construction loan. And so the lender is going to require the land that they own as collateral for that construction loan. And so if the owner has defaulted on payments to that lender for that construction loan, then likely that lender is going to be the owner in interest at the time of the default. But the access agreement, that's why it's a three-party agreement, is because it would apply to whomever is the owner in interest at the time of the default.
Okay.
I actually think it's preferable to the agreement that is in place in Oswego because I don't think it's a good situation for the city to be in the ownership interest of a half-built project. Here we have the access and the performance bond that is in place, which covers the totality of the project. So the performance bond is there in place to ensure that both the public parking structure and the private part of the development get built. So there is a bank that issues that. In the event of default, we are able to access that money by exercising our rights under that bond. We get the funding in order to complete the project. And then we just hire a general contractor. They've got all of the plans. They hire subcontractors to complete that project.
And so in Aurora, they didn't have the performance bond? Or they didn't have, the lender didn't? How did it work in Aurora, then?
You know, I think it was a different situation where I don't know that Aurora transferred property interest to the developer. In that case, maybe the developer owned the land. And if it's the developer's land, they can choose to develop it or not develop it. In this case, we have an agreement whereby in order to, certain step measures need to be taken before we will transfer the land, which is why paragraph 1.02F was added so that we can have this access agreement in place before the redevelopment site is transferred to the developer.
It's giving me some pause. I mean, my support, my sportsman hanging on by a thread over the past many discussions here. And I had been ready to walk into the last cow and vote no. And it's, 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 I get in here and I hear the optimism and the positivity and I get wrapped up in it because I, I, I feel this as the successful, like, prize to a place well-made based on the efforts and the, and the pushing of staff and council to make River Street such a cool place. And so it feels like, I want to believe so much that this is the, that this is the next evolution of that and it's going to be a catalyst for our downtown. And I just am starting to get worried that a catalyst, catalyst is neutral. A catalyst can be good or it can be really bad. And at the scale that we're working, if it goes bad, at, in one, in one side, it's, it's community trust in us that, I mean, the, the small sliver, I feel, of the community that's, that's supporting this right now is hanging on by a thread, too. And then at worst, if it takes down any of the businesses that are already, are already established there. I know that restaurants do well during construction, but retail is another thing. And I don't believe retail is going to see any support from this until that building is built and fully occupied. And, and, and I apologize, COVID has just really shifted my risk aversion in terms of all of these new projects. And, and I worry that maybe Batavia in 2020 doesn't need a catalyst. 2020 needs stability and we need, we need projects that obviously push vibrancy and, and push to diversify and increase our downtown tax base. Because as I explained, I spent all week trying to reply to every negative email that I received and phone call that I received about these votes. And, and they were exclusively negative from the community, trying to justify my vote and trying to explain that our taxes are absolutely going to continue to go up, stay the same, if not go up, if we don't start pushing density and if we don't start pushing infill. That, that, that is, that is what we as a community need to be seeing and pushing. But at the same time, a project of this size carries with it so much more risk. And, and in some ways, I feel like it's already been a catalyst for really positive change here in Batavia, that we are now in the possession of a lot of really valuable pieces of land and lots that have been cleaned up and have been prepared for development that we didn't have five years ago. And they're less complicated lots. And they'd be easier for the community to possibly fall in love with a four-story development on because it would have a smaller footprint, because it would be moving into uncertain COVID, post-COVID world in a little bit smaller chunks and with a little bit more, you know, of a, a more conservative approach to risk. And that's, I, and I know that that means that we are, that we are facing, you know, awful budget discussions for the next couple of years because we're not moving the needle, maybe, but I'm struggling. And I know that you all heard it last week, I'm struggling, I'm struggling to support, I'm struggling to support it. And I'm looking for, looking for some, this is, this is, you know, one of those things that was going to push me over the edge because I just talked to this guy and he was just saying how that was such a crucial part of the Oswego plan. And, and then to see it pop up today, a couple hours before, I just haven't had time to fully research it, I haven't had time to fully process it, and I'm just struggling.
Well, one of the things that is, is an example down in Oswego, I think, is how successfully that construction project has launched down there and the lack of any drama that it has created. And speaking with the city administrator for Oswego, that while, you know, there were people who, because of the magnitude, the sheer size of the project, that there were concerns about that, but that that has really died down as the project comes to fruition and people are getting excited about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I, and I appreciate the fact, Alderman Beck, that you are struggling with it because it is the first project of this magnitude in our downtown. But I just think that the timing could not be better for us to have a developer that wants to put a $50 million project in our downtown and that creating $1 million in new equalized assessed value for all of the taxing districts to share, when right now they share a little over $6,000, would really be hard to say no to that kind of economic potential in our downtown. And I'm sure that businesses there, in particular retail, will struggle with the construction much as they did when we redid the bridge on Wilson Street. But it was something that the council determined the ultimate result was going to be one of positivity for all of downtown.
Well, and they certainly say that, that construction has not been as disruptive there. It is going in two phases, which is nice. And then, you know, because they are separate buildings, but that there's no businesses sharing a wall with this new, this development in Shodene's, that the area is a lot less developed right there than we have right here. So it is a little bit different in that regard. But there are still some businesses. I did go down and take a look and there is a dress shop that is, their front door actually looks out onto the construction site. And there are some other businesses along the way. I can't remember vividly what they looked like.
Alderman Jang?
To address your point, I, I had the same reaction. When I saw that email, it gave my heart, you know, for a second there. I will say this, though, I'm not the lender, but as all lender, I do not want to own a half-built parking lot. I would want to finish that parking lot so the building can get built, so I can sell my interest and get out. I don't anticipate a bank being the one to stand in the way of progress on this particular one. They're going to want to unload the property if for some reason the developer can't come through. Developers here, I'd be interested to hear if there's anything that can be renegotiated with his lender or if this is, as I've said before, is just a deal breaker in his, in his situation. I also empathize with the, the back and forth you've had. I've had that, too. It has been a wall of no from every email that I have received for probably the last six months. I've received, I don't think, one in support of this project. But then again, the reason we got put up here was so we could spend the time reading the reports, attending these meetings for hours. Many people who send us emails have not had the benefit of doing any research. They read something on Facebook that pissed them off and then they decided to email us and say, "You have got to stop this project, you're ruining my town." I have to remind us that a previous iteration of this council reviewed a proposal for this land that called for a dozen townhomes. So we said, "Absolutely not. What a waste of space." We looked at a proposal for a slightly larger building. And then we got the idea, what if we could build it just a little bit bigger and let that increment pay for this, this amenity of a public parking deck? And that's how we arrived at where we are today. The current iteration of this plan is substantially like the one that was almost essentially unanimously approved by this group. So as I, as I hear the wall of no, I remind myself that the risk factors have not changed or the factors that maybe want, want to say yes to this thing have not changed. At the committee meeting last week, I heard people talking about, "This is a very cookie-cutter, uninspired design." Thank you for the design element of the bell tower. It is, it is at least a nod to what used to sit on that corner. And it's, in a world where there are four models and three elevations in most subdivisions that a lot of us live in here, thank you for putting a little bit of thought into, into this property. So it's nothing to be, to be ashamed of. The last thing I would say is this, is a vote to kill this project is a step backwards. It is, it is guaranteeing that to offer the same level of services that we come to expect as we live in this town are going to cost more in the future. And we have now shackled ourselves and said that this economic engine that could possibly pay for that stuff in the future is, is absolutely not going to happen. And then it just dumps a bucket of water on the, the little campfire that has started on, on River Street. And it, it feels disingenuous of us to do something like that the last hour when, as I remember since I've been here, since 86, those community surveys said, "Revitalize your downtown, revitalize your downtown." We spent all these years putting a plan together and now we're, we're going to say no? What a letdown. What an absolute letdown. I, I'm still in support and, and I feel you, but I, I still support it. Mayor Sue lost her job in St. Charles. Half that city council lost their job for what they did at First Street. They made the right choice. Their, their legacy was standing up for what was right for the community, even though people who didn't have the benefit of all the papers that we have read that says that this is the right thing to do. So I'm, I'm still in support.
Dave, did you want to make some comments?
Sure. Dave, for the record, David Patzelt, 77 North First Street, Geneva, Illinois, 60134. A couple of comments. Alderman, to your comment about the, the lender, this change for the, that was to, in the, the change to the language was actually added and suggested by city staff and it was not suggested or added by us. So I believe that that language is adding some additional safety, security to the benefit of the, of the city. So I don't... is adding some additional safety, security to the benefit of the, of the city. So I don't want you to feel that, I understand what Laura and the city attorney were trying to do and we accepted it. We're, we're fine with that, that language. And yes, we, we believe that the lender is going to go along with it. We hope that the lender does. So that's where the language came from. So I think it's actually to your benefit and should not have been something that perhaps would give you additional concern. You made some references to the city of Aurora and I don't know what projects those were in Aurora, but I don't believe that it had anything to do with a Shodine project in Aurora. If it did, I'd like you to tell me where, what you're referring to.
Which one had the old train route going through it, right on the river?
So that, that property is referred, we refer to it as the East Bank Development. That East Bank Development, although there was a RDA, a redevelopment agreement approved by the city of Aurora, ground was never broken on that, on that project. And there was a TIF district established. The 2006 real estate collapse came in at the time of that. And so there's, has not been a project started and there has not been any, we're still the owners of the land and have not walked away from the land. And we are still cooperative and working with the city to eventually hopefully have some project that could come to fruition there. There is some differences with the economic model in Aurora as compared to the city of Batavia. The biggest issue there is the rental rates. Rental rates in Aurora are lower than the rental rates that we believe we can achieve in downtown Batavia. That is the biggest difference that plays with the, the formula. In addition, there are some economic hardships, I'll put it, in the city of Aurora that their funding is, is rather low or short and is a challenge. So if there is something that you have heard or that you can speak more to, I'd like to hear. It sounds to me like perhaps there's somebody providing some false information about a collapse or failure or something that has struggled in Aurora with our project.
No, it was more that just the retained, the fact that nothing, the ground didn't get broken and then, and then the city doesn't have any control on reselling that, you know, when the economic downturn, you know, turned around, that they don't have the control to then put that back out to RFQ or anything like that. I think that was, that was my, that was my holdup, that I don't want it to sit, if you never break ground on One North Washington or do and it stalls out, then I just don't want it, there's some, there's some security in my mind to having some city control over it.
So in comparison to Aurora, Aurora, Shodine acquired the land not from the city. We acquired it from individual property owners. Here it is city land that in essence were to buy from you for $10. We don't want the land if we can't do a project. Also within the redevelopment agreement prior to us closing on the land with you, we have to show you that we have proof of financing to do the project. And then if we, for some reason, even have the proof to do the, to do the project and we don't commence construction on the project, then the land will revert back to the, to the city of Batavia. So you have the control of, if we think we're going to start and then we don't start, the land ends up back in, back in your control. So a little bit of difference there. We still own the land in Aurora and the city does not want to buy the land. We did some improvements down in Aurora, meaning taking structures down, taking the old train station down and have not gone vertical with anything new going in at that, at that project.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for ordinance 20-45. Any other discussion?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I think it is worth being reiterated. Everyone has been in agreement of density in our downtown. Everyone has been in agreement of building development on that parcel. I have heard no one in the community pro or con against this project that has denied those two facts. America has been, build your downtown for the last 200 years. This is a downtown where we're having people stay. However, to say that people are misinformed and that's who's saying no, that is patently false. I have been here from the very beginning and I voted yes and I read all of the same information and I understand all of the information. I understand why we were doing it and it changed. As factors changed, we have had five years of some of the largest unexpected changes in the United States. And to not weigh the consideration of those current factors and prior factors or to throw out any notion of risk, that's my field, is insurance. So along with Abby, when we receive another item today that we're being told is incredibly beneficial to the city, why did that get put to us today instead of the five years where it would have been the benefic, the most beneficial thing to do? And I'm sorry, but to say that a vote against this and voting your conscience is a step backwards is then, or a no vote to say that a vote for this is the destruction of our community. And that's unfair also. So I am still a no because I do not believe that this project at this size does not adequately protect the way that we want this city to grow. That's it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll take another follow-up.
Sure.
Because yes, I have been following this since the beginning. It was my very first email to my council representatives to show my support for this project when it very first was proposed. And I have followed it diligently ever since through all its many iterations and feel that the people that I've reached out to are also well-informed and are not, are still not excited by this. And, and I don't believe that it throws a buck, I mean, okay, yes, it throws a bucket of water on this project specifically, absolutely. I think it is a step backwards if we let it be a step backwards and we do not have a plan in place. And I, and I was going to say this separately too, I think a yay vote or a nay vote both need to establish a plan starting tomorrow for the way this city reacts and bounces back. So either we are establishing like we did with the bridge, the protection plan for our surrounding businesses, or we are starting to look at these other properties and we're looking at RFQs that are not 12 townhomes, but are not something that the community is going, is not going to be able to fall in love with. And we've given them every chance to fall in love with it. And, and the bell tower and the, and the retail were fantastic additions and yet we still could not get people to fall in love. And to second what Mark says too, this is, this is not a slam against Shodine. This is not a slam against development. I worked at the Harrington for 10 years. I did very, I loved working for the Shodine organization. I had, I did not have any complaints about that. And, and I, I am, I am, the reason I have voted yes is for all the reasons that Dan is saying. And yet I still could not defend my position to all of these people that are reaching out to us with simply that, that we've made it this far and it's really hard to turn back. Because that's, that, it, it's killing me to, to potentially turn back. But that's not a reason to go forward either. And, oh, there was one more thing and I lost it. I lost it. I'll come back, sorry. I'm delaying this.
Alderman O'Brien wanted to speak. I'll get, I'll come back to you.
You know, we've been doing this, as Marty said, for five years. Some, some delays, some delays, why, I don't know. But again, you know, this, this project will pay for itself. We all know that. Everyone knows that. All the emails I've received from people is I know some of them say that the project is too big. It doesn't fit Batavia. Some people say, you know, this project doesn't have the, the vision of the people of Batavia. Has my vision. And, you know, I have to think that, you know, there's, there's people who are speaking out against it. Again, the ones that I've heard from keep saying they don't want their taxes to go up. And, and this is, and we have lively discussions every year. We're coming into one again soon on, on the budget and taxes. And I remember last year, there was a vote to raise taxes $12 per household. And I was for it because, you know, staff said, "We, we need the money." And I lost that vote for $12. I mean, that's, that is a bottle of wine. And so if we don't want to raise taxes, I get that. We need to generate revenue somewhere. And this is going to generate revenue. I mean, and without us having to pay for it, obviously we're taking out a bond, but that bond will be paid with the increment. And then as far as vision is concerned, I remember when we had the new library. Oh, we can't tear down that old high school because that had memories. And the, the high school was important to the city because this, this is our history. And now we have the best library, even the new one that just got built in Geneva isn't as good as our library here in Batavia. And that library is, is a standout in, in all the communities in, in the western, western suburbs. But, you know, the vision was we had to stay. We had to stay this way. And that library took a step forward. And I remember 10 years ago, we were talking River Street. I'm proud to say it was my idea and, and everyone said, "Oh, can't do that. Can't do that because it's, it's not Batavia." And now, you know, I, I, I got Dawn Tanuda to, to work with me. She and I started pushing it and we started talking to other aldermen, got Dave Brown on board, started talking. I think Alan, you'd remember, we even put together the, the, whatever that is when you put things on the, on the, the screen, the PowerPoint. And we spoke to, and Dawn and I were the new council members. And we put a PowerPoint up and people were opposed to it. I mean, absolutely, people were opposed to it. And we just kept saying, "No, this is, this is my vision too. I have a vision for Batavia. And I think I have a good vision for Batavia." And so I, I made that vision and that came to fruition. And everyone now says, and there was a lot of naysayers throughout the community, "This is terrible. And what do we have now? We have something that has been nationally acclaimed. It's being run in, in magazines in Europe. It is highly successful. It's an income generator." And I see the same thing for One Washington Place. I mean, all the negativity I hear really turns my stomach when I hear people start talking about Shodine. "Oh, Shodineville and Shodine's a crook." I don't even know Ken Shodine. I just met Dave Patzelt on this project. He seems like a good, decent person. So I'm sick of hearing people running other people down with no account and no reasons for that, except they don't like what they see. And most people do not understand it because they don't understand TIF and that this project will pay for itself and that we're fighting hard to not raise taxes. Now, if you don't like the design, I get it, you know? I'm not, I don't know if I like it or don't like it, but I'm saying, we're not, if this goes, if we don't pass this, we do not pass this, 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 this project here. Now, there's not another project just banging on the door to come do something. Developers are going to say, "Wait a second. Shodine worked on that. We had, they had belt and suspenders, belt and suspenders. We got the SSA." So if something goes wrong and the increment is not covering our bond, that SSA will. That's belt and suspenders. And we have that. And, and most places don't get that. I don't believe they have that in Oswego. And so if we, we, we let them kick Shodine to the side of the road, so to speak, and say, "We're, we're not going to do this with you," what other developer is going to come in and say, "Well, you know, we got an idea, you know? Give us the property and, and you can take out another bond." What the bond is paying for, so people are aware of it also, it's paying for parking and a streetscape. It's not paying for one apartment. Shodine is paying for some of the parking also. So, I mean, it's just, we're giving the people what they want, parking downtown. We're doing a streetscape. We're, we're trying to make, you know, and to your point, Abby, again, with, with pedestrianism, we're going to have these 300 people living in an apartment building and they're going to just be walking downtown to dinner, walking downtown to get a drink in a restaurant or go shopping. There'll be a lot of people walking around downtown and that promotes more walking downtown. I mean, I think this is, this is a good project for our city. I'm definitely behind it. And, and I think if we, we let this fail, we're not going to see another project for a while because no one's going to take the chance. The amount of money that Shodine has already invested in this is, is, is just criminal for us to just say, "Okay, our partnership is now dissolved because we don't like the design." It's, you know, this is, this is a, a change for our city, moving forward. It is a forward-moving vehicle for us and, and we need to jump on that and make sure that we do for the future for our city, not just for what feels good right today and what we think the color of the brick should be. And that's what I hear is, "I don't like the design." Sorry. I mean, we need to move forward. I'm, I'm in full support.
Will you come back? Remember what we're going to say?
What, obviously the Wooner is a great success too. And it is, it's to your credit that I've hung out on this long, Mike O'Brien, because I trust your vision and because I trust your judgment on these things. So how do we get the community on, on our side with this kind of development?
You know, I, I can't really, don't know the answer to that. But we never had the community on our side for the library, never had the community on our side. We had protests on River Street. People were protesting with placards, "Oh, this is terrible for the city of Batavia." We didn't get the people on our side because they didn't quite understand it, I guess. I don't know what the reasons. But when we got the things accomplished, everyone seemed to like it then. Everyone likes the library. They like River Street. They're going to like Washington Place. I'm just, it's, the, the revenues that are generated, they're going to like Washington Place.
Abby, it's time. It'll take time. People won't like things that, when it first happens, but it'll grow. And then like he was saying, people didn't like the library. People didn't like the sign. It'll take time, but people will see what he just said.
I would share the memory. As you know, I've been here a long time and probably one of the more controversial things that I was involved with was the building of River Rain Senior Citizen Living Facility up the street here. And your grandfather was with me on that. He was a supporter of that idea. And he came in and we took a lot of grief. I mean, it was, a number of people were opposing that for whatever reasons. And I will tell you that I sit here 35 years later after it was built, because I was there for the groundbreaking and the ribbon cutting. And I can think in my memory of all the old-time Batavia residents, many of whom were contemporaries of my parents, who were able to sell their house and move into that facility and live out their lives in, you know, securities, serenity, nice facility, walking distance of downtown. And some of them told me, Jeff, I was, my, my social security wasn't really carrying it, but the way this is structured and the way this is funded, I can live here and not have a problem. And I think to myself, had we not done that, where all those people would have ended up? It would have been a real sad story for a lot of lifelong Batavians who worked very hard for this town, raised families here and really at the end of the day, and we still have a number of those folks up there today. I'm very proud of that. And so I, I wear some political battle scars from it, but I wear them with great pride because I think River Rain ended up being a very powerful and pride thing for this town to have.
Your honor, may I say one last thing? I know I spoke and, and I, but I just, in support of what you just said, and, and to answer your question again, Abby, it's, you know, the mayor's told us how many times that Alderman Brown's father, when he was mayor, purchased this building. And they were, they were going to hang him. They were hanging him in eff- And they were going to hang him. They were hanging him in effigy. I mean, they were just going to, you can't spend that kind of money on this building. And he did. He thought, "No, this is the right thing. This was his vision. This was the right thing to do." Turns out, it was the right thing to do. And people were opposed to it because it was change. And so, they opposed change, like Dan said about St. Charles, you know? Sue Klinkhammer got crushed, and she did the right thing.
Your Honor, if I could. You know, I hear all sides of this. I've sat and listened to more than my share of discussion, both sides of this. And this isn't over yet, Abby. This is going to, this one is the east side catalyst. There's another one right behind it, almost identical to it, on the west side. It's coming. And for anybody to think that the city keeps growing out to support itself or to continue to grow, that's not happening anymore. It's going up. And, you know, your point about how we have to look to the vertical side to be able to sustain, you know, the things that we want and the things that our community members demand, we have to do that to be able to generate that tax money. Unfortunately, the only way we make that happen downtown is with TIFs because you're dealing with a lot of old industrial sites down here and a lot of strange concerns that have to be dealt with. And I think are easier to deal with when you deal with a TIF or a redevelopment agreement project that happens in the downtown. And I think that we, again, have to look at what it's going to be like 20 years from now. It's not just how many people are upset about it today, don't like the color, don't like the size, don't like one side's four stories, one side's six stories. Whatever their disagreements are with it, it has to be about where this town's going to be in 20 or 30 years. And when we don't get that jump on it, I don't know how we ever get that into the future. Because if one doesn't fly, the rest of them aren't going to fly down here. And then we're going to be stuck with, we're going to be a shrinking tax base that's going to have to support the sprawl that's out there and what area we have left without being able to go vertical in the dense downtown. And to me, that's a waste. I think we have squandered a lot of opportunities to have things like this happen, and I don't want to let this one get away. Because I think if this one goes through and it works, it's going to be the catalyst that makes the other ones work. Because it will show other developers that this is viable. And, you know, we have to, again, I'll beat this drum again. We have to say that we have a train station five minutes north of us and 15 minutes south of us. And those are both huge selling points to a vertical downtown is that public transportation is really there, and people can't forget that. And that'll make this town survive. By going vertical downtown, it will really make it flourish. And I really feel like we don't want to waste this opportunity.
Any other comments?
Just as a reminder, in order for this project to go, we're going to have to create a TIF that incorporates a lot of other properties that have other opportunities for development on it. If we don't approve this project, we are not able to TIF those other properties. And so then we are set, we're holding real estate where we have no opportunity for a developer to come in, we have no tools to provide them. So it is important for us to, you know, not only do this project, but this, as Alan said, will help in the redevelopment of the other locations because of the TIF.
But they're all in existing TIFs right now, aren't they? All but one?
No, not all of them.
Not all of them, all but one and two?
And I think there are some that are going to be expiring in a couple of years.
Right. TIF one expires in less than four years. And I think that's where most of the properties that are located in a TIF currently are located in TIF one. Some are in TIF three, which is through 2038.
And part of that redevelopment plan that was presented to us, these are smaller locations. These are 2030 potential, if that's decided on the development. That'll add something, but that's not going to add the depth that we need. You know, we need to, you know, increase people to help with the tax burden. If we don't pass it, then the tax increases are going to go on the people that are here. And we're also going to be expected to support our downtown to keep it lively. And at some point, it's going to bust for the people that are here. So if we don't get more people in our community to help, we're going to start losing people. And then we're going to become that community where we don't have people living here or coming here. Because either we don't have the amenities or we can't provide the services that they look for when they come to our community.
Okay, any final comments?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I do not like the tone that we believe that if you're against this, you're against change. I can't stress that enough, where being against this is to send us to the poorhouse. I just, I don't subscribe to that because, as we've also been pointing out, I helped bring the community dinner when it was first here, and I brought up the idea of the boardwalk shops because I believe that we have a common vision that actually binds us. And to believe that it's only because of aesthetics is wrong. I believe, from my read of it, is that we are overburdening our services, overburdening that area. And those have been concerns that people have weighed, and those are the decisions that we have to make. But to sell it as it's tax dollars that we're going to get, a million dollars, that is not correct because we don't see that for 23 years. That is why our partners over at the school board unanimously voted no for this. This has to go back before the Joint Tax Review Board again. And if they do not approve it, it doesn't kill it, but you need a two-thirds vote. So when we're voting on this, you've got to keep those things in mind because there are other community members that will be voting on this. It's not just our vision. It's not just our vision. And one last point on it, to say that it's a $50 million project that if we prove it goes away, this is not $50 million to the city. We are not being cut a check for $50 million for the city. We are getting a parking garage that is paid for taxes. That is correct. But $50 million to the city is not correct. And we all know there are other ideas out there.
All right. Listen, Your Honor, I don't mean to belay this. I don't want to counter people like other people in this body have been being countered. I think that's rude behavior, and I wish people would suspend that rude behavior. But I will say this, it's $6,700 that this district now gets in a tax, a real estate tax. Okay? That $6,700 they will continue to get for the next 23 years. And so, we're not taking any money from them. And so, if there's no increment, because we do nothing with this blighted area, and there's no increment, for 23 years, let's say for round figures, they're going to get $10,000 for 23 years. Well, that's $230,000 in 23 years, okay? And so, if we do the project and they get their $233,000, $230,000 for 23 years, then they get into a million dollars, okay? And so, that's the fact, okay? And the next fact is, no one's ever said that Shodine was writing the city $50 million check or $30 million check. What it is, is an investment. We're paying for the parking garage, we're paying for the streetscape. Shodine's paying partially for the parking garage, and they're paying for the apartments. And it's an investment in our city to bring people into our city. So that, I just wanted to clear things up, to keep things straight. Dave, you have something to say?
Abby, I guess I'd, we've started into this debate because, sorry about that, posting. We started into this debate because you raised a question, I believe, about this language that was added, that started to push you in an opposite direction. And so, is there something that you would like that language? That makes you feel uncomfortable, that we should go back and reevaluate that language? Is that really what we need to do? And should we table this and revisit that language that you'd like to see modified?
No. It was, I heard it said, you know, that we're all, we're all, it's not a black and white issue. We're all arguing different shades of gray at this point. And so, while my shade of gray has just been kind of waffling for months now, that was just one thing that just threw up this red flag as a very timely note that I had just heard about elsewhere, that I wanted to get out there. And I know it's the 11th hour, and I, but it helps me to still see the passion that exists for the project because I don't see that elsewhere. And if this goes through, it's going to need a lot of that to get us, it's going to need a lot of passion and a lot of cheerleading from this body. And I want to know, and I want to feel reaffirmed that there's enough passion, at least in this room, to push it to success. Because I don't want to set us up for failure. I don't want to set Shodine up for failure. I don't want to set us up for losing a downtown business and having people point at us and say, "Was it worth it? You know, you did this when you chose one over the other." And I worry about that because it used to be the bird in hand situation where we've got, you know, we've got a developer, we need to go with this. We don't know. There's no other developers out there. And now, I'm looking at our city, and I'm looking at a pandemic, and I'm looking at industries get crushed, and mine included, and going, "Oh, our businesses on River Street are the bird in hand now." And this is the unknown. And I'm feeling just very worried about that. But if you're telling me that you're confident, and you're telling me that we can push this through, I just need to see a plan like now. I want to see enthusiastic support from the Joint Review Board. I want to see, I want to see something that turns around a little bit of public opinion towards this and shows me that it's going to be a good. So thank you for bringing that up, but no, it was just one of those things that caused me to fall off the fence.
Alderman, is that all?
Yes. I would just like to say that, like you said, Alderman O'Brien, in a month or two, we're going to have talks about budget. One of the things about the budget is always taxes. And I'll tell you what, if we ever raise taxes, my constituents are saying, "What are you doing to lower my taxes? Why do they keep going up?" I think this here is an opportunity to lower people's taxes down the road. I know a lot of people, the people that are against this are also the people that were picketing on Route 31 in Wilson when the school district got the money from the shopping mall in Aurora, that they wanted that money back. The school district did not get that money back. So I'm just, I think this is our way to do something that is positive for our community down the road as far as alleviating property taxes.
Okay, we have a motion and second then for the approval.
Your Honor.
Okay, go ahead.
Your Honor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you.
Go ahead.
Your Honor, can you hear me?
We can hear you, but your speaker might be off. Can you hear us?
Go ahead, Elliot.
Is it Elliot? He's re, maybe he's calling in again.
In the meantime, one of the things that is being pointed out is having to wait 23 years until the city sees tax revenue come back from this project, and that is not true. If you can visualize the amount of money that people in 186 residential units in our downtown are going to spend in our retail shops, in our restaurants, in our bars, in our grocery stores, and the businesses that will come in to service the needs of those downtown residents. Also wanted to point out that the Fermilab project should also be taken into consideration here. In two to three years' time, when they are hiring 2,000 additional employees to work on the research projects that are being conducted there, and they're bringing in scientists from 20 different countries in this world, having this type of living situation in the heart of our downtown would be highly beneficial to attract those individuals to live here in Batavia versus another town that has this kind of living opportunity.
Elliot, are you on now?
Yes, I am, Your Honor. Thank you. Sorry about that. Had to hang up and dial back in.
Go ahead.
You know, thank you, sir. So, as I'm hearing this debate tonight, you know, I'm having deja vu again and again because so many times have we gone through this, I mean, since my entire tenure here on council, where we believed there was one last hurdle. We believed we needed to do one more thing. We believed we needed to go one extra step to keep this project moving forward. And here we are, five years later. Here we are after two more elections, about to come into a third election where the council may change yet again even further. And we still believe that it's this one more step. And along that way, we have changed the plan, changed it again, increased the amount of TIF that we're making available. We've gone into a lengthy discussion, the last county meeting, about some other potential, you know, aid. And here we are, again, still believing that this is the last step. And as we fully know, it's going to have to get reviewed as a joint support. We already know that the other seven bodies unanimously voted against it. And yet, here we are, believing it's one last step. Again, I don't have a problem with the size of this project. I don't have a problem with going and using TIF. Where I lost faith in this project was it kept getting more expensive. It kept going up in cost. And we kept believing that there was just one more step, and we didn't want to keep, we didn't want to lose that time already spent. So we kept chasing it, and we kept chasing it, and we kept chasing it. In business, they call that chasing the bad money with more money. And I'm just tired of doing that. I think we have found other ways to stimulate economic activity in this town. And it's in ways that are not the expense that this project presents. And I understand the math of the million dollars 23 years from now. I understand the math of getting density into our downtown for sales and restaurant sales at that. But that comes not this budget cycle, not the next budget cycle, not even the following budget cycle. This is going to be after one, if not two, more elections. And I'm with you, Mike, 100% on having the long-term vision. I think that's why we've gone into some deep conversations about strategic plan, which I've been very happy to see to really start to come into being. But here is where I've just lost faith in this project is because, again, we seem to just always believe that we're going to take this one last step, and then it's going to go forward, and everything's going to be great, and the city's going to get behind us, and everybody else is going to be on board. That's not happening, and it's not happening again and again. And every time, it just keeps coming back to us. I almost want to place a bet that we'll be back here for some reason, unknown reason. I'm not blaming Shodine here, but for some reason, we will be back here in six months, believing we have to do one more thing. And then six months later, for one more thing, or a year later, for one more thing because we didn't break ground, or because of this and that and the other, environmental or otherwise. I just don't believe in this project anymore. I don't think this is what we need anymore. I, again, looking at this design, it is closer to what we originally had. And I liked what we originally had. I was on board with what we originally... I was on board with what we originally had, at the cost that we originally had, while the motivation of the city and the different governing bodies was what we had. That has since changed, and it's changed over the course of five years, and I don't believe it's there anymore. I don't believe in this project anymore. I'm a no.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we have a motion and second on the floor for the approval of ordinance 20-45, the major amendment to the planned development overlay for One Washington Place mixed-use development. Court, please call the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Ure?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
I still don't know. Aye.
Aye?
Yeah.
Knop?
No.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Seven-six.
Motion's approved by a vote of, ordinance 20-45 is approved by a vote of seven yes, six no. One absent. Okay, moving to 12, which is ordinance 20-51, authorizing execution of a third amended and restated redevelopment agreement for One Washington Place. Who's got this?
Your Honor, I do.
Okay.
In committee, we discussed pretty extensively the changes to the redevelopment agreement. There were two asks, and the committee decided not to go with them. Developer was asking if it was okay to begin construction drawings immediately upon approval of the RDA, as long as the costs were going to be reimbursed, and we're saying we're not willing to take that gamble. Developer also had requested adding a Saks, a sales tax rebate for the retail space into this RDA, and the committee rejected that, said that we are interested in that tool, but we do not want to codify it into the agreement. So the other language cleans this up and is an agreement that we should move forward. So I would move that we approve ordinance 20-51, authorizing execution of an amendment to the RDA.
Second.
Okay, motion and second for the approval of ordinance 20-51, authorizing execution of a third amended and restated redevelopment agreement for One Washington Place. Any further discussion?
Your Honor.
Alderman Wolf.
Laura, the language change you put out today, that's included in this RDA. Is that where the language change is at, is in the RDA?
Yes, it is.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Your Honor.
You're getting some feedback. Go ahead.
I'm a no. And a vote for this is not in the right direction of the community, and I will not cheerlead for something that I believe does harm.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and second then for the approval of ordinance 20-51, authorizing execution of the third amended and restated redevelopment agreement for One Washington Place. Court, call the roll.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Ure?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
No.
Seven-six.
So ordinance 20-51 is approved by a vote of seven yes, six no, and one absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is resolution 20-097-R, a resolution expressing official intent regarding certain expenditures to be reimbursed from the special tax allocation fund from proceeds of an obligation issued, if any, or any other sources from such fund in connection with the proposed tax increment financing industry, commonly described as the Near East Side Downtown Redevelopment Project. Who's got this one?
So moved.
You're presenting it, Alderman?
Well, there's not much to present here. This is just an acknowledgement of the state's TIF Act, and it just says that any money that is spent as part of this project, the money has to be acknowledged. We have to raise our hand and say this is TIF money, so it's entirely procedural.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chanet, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of resolution 20-097-R. Any discussion? Court, call the roll.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Ure?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
No.
Eight-five.
So that one is approved by a vote of eight yes, five no, one absent. Okay, moving to item 14, the administrator's report.
Thank you very much. So the additional brush pickup has started that was a result of the storm last Monday, and so we're beginning on the west side. Hopefully, everybody was able to move their brush out to the curb by 7:00 a.m. We're going to start over on the west side, because that's where we ended up our brush pickup last week, our ordinary brush pickup. And then we will move to the east side. Just to let everybody know, if they want to see what has been cleared, we do have a brush pickup map. If you go to the city's website under Services and Brush Pickup, there is a link on that page that will, every 9:00 a.m. is refreshed to show in green the areas that still remain to be picked up and in red the areas of our city that have already been picked up. And also, I mentioned this last time, but resident Carl Binwitty wanted to make sure that today, I once again acknowledge the extraordinary efforts of many departments of the city of Batavia who worked together to respond to the community's needs during this extremely dramatic and traumatic storm event. They had very little time to prepare for the derision that cut through the southern part of our town quite dramatically, and the street department working together with the electric linemen, working together with our water utility, including our police officers who were out there to direct traffic, and our fire department who were out there to supplement and be there when people needed them as well. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the individuals who work in the police records department, who overnight receive the phone calls from anybody and everybody who needs that kind of help and assistance during the non-business hours of the city, and it's ordinarily just two people in that office. And they were able to not only field hundreds of calls that were coming in, but they were also able to send out over 65 dispatches to our city employees about who needed them to be where and when. And so really want to acknowledge the extraordinary efforts of everyone working together to bring the lights back on as soon as possible after that storm event. Also wanted to mention that yesterday evening, we had quite a dramatic event down here at the Batavia Dam. Mayor, I think you're going to talk about in that in your mayor's report tonight, aren't you? Yes.
Did the videos show it set up?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I do. So I'll let you talk about that, and that's all that I have. Mayor was mentioning that we're meeting with a lot of people right now who are interested in locating their businesses here in downtown Batavia. And so the community development department, as well as the fire marshal, comes down to meet with these folks and the building inspector to try to give them ideas about what, you know, the spaces that they're going into and what types of things that they might think about as they come in. But hopefully, those leases will get signed, and we can share the news with all of you when that happens.
Any questions, the city administrator? Okay, moving to committee reports. Government services, Alderman Chanet?
Your Honor, no report.
Public utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
City services, Alderman Wolf?
No report, just to make sure that everybody takes an extra sweep through their own neighborhood and make sure that all the drains are cleared, because there's lots of little branches that the service didn't get to pick up when they do the brush pickup, and a lot of those are clogged in drains, and we need to make sure those stay open.
Okay. Community development, Alderman Callahan?
No report.
No report, okay. All right, do we have other business?
I have a question, Your Honor. I had a request from the owners of Limestone Coffee, the traffic sign that's in the parking spot, right adjacent to their, to their front window that says River Street closed. They wondered, since that is not an active parking spot, if they might be able to put a bike rack in that spot instead to, they often have a large crowd of bikes there on the, on the rack around the corner and then on the tree right in front. And as they try to clear up more space, since they're not taking patrons inside yet, to keep the sidewalk clear of those bikes, would be greatly appreciated. And if that is okay, what is the process if they're able to acquire a bike rack to get that installed there? What would be the process?
So I think one of the concerns there is the high volume of traffic that is going by on Wilson Street and how we would put in place the appropriate protection so that if people were moving their bikes in and out of the rack, that it isn't going to be a dangerous situation for them, that there wouldn't be any conflict. So maybe they could provide us with the design that they are thinking about for that bike rack? And then I think Barco, the last place that we got our bike racks from was Barco. But the city has a bike rack installed that is on, right around the corner from them at Shumway and Wilson Street, too.
I think people getting in and out of their cars all up and down the street is probably the equivalent of people getting on and off a bike right there as well. So I guess I don't necessarily recognize the danger as much, but perhaps if it was, you know, a rack this way, so they were coming out of their, you know, if the parking spot is here and there's a bike rack here and they can get off it and go along their way or up on the sidewalk, something like that would probably work.
Is there perhaps, instead of putting it into the street, is there the opportunity for having it on the backside of their building as well, back in the parking area?
I don't think that would be utilized. There is a bike, there is a bike rack down there.
Okay.
Only ever seen one bike there, and it was there for months. It wasn't, it wasn't something that ever moved, so.
Okay, I can look into that and get back to you about that.
Anybody else? Under the mayor's report, very quickly, I think we're all aware, we've got significant road construction going on in town this year, South Prairie Street, certainly Main Street, and now Batavia Avenue and Main Street intersection. And, you know, we've been finishing up the unseparation of the sanitary and storm sewers on the southwest side, and that's continuing. And I know we got Garfield and Harrison and Morton Street somewhat discombobulated at the moment. On top of that, Kane County's been out rebuilding some of the intersections and making improvements on Randall Road, and they've also been out at the intersection of Fabian and Kirk Road doing quite a bit of work. So, and that coupled with the resurfacing of the Fabian Parkway Bridge, I've had people in Batavia telling me they haven't seen this much road work in a long time. I just want to share with them that this body, last meeting, approved a street improvement program with motor fuel tax funding for about a million and a half dollars. And so we just are getting ready to start that. So that's going to be scattered throughout the neighborhoods. But mostly, that's not, we're not, we're not putting in many sewers with that one, or no new water systems. This is all just going to be kind of some resurfacing and some nice street curb repair and things like that, so, but another million and a half dollars. I know for a fact that, because I was involved with it, we got $2.5 million in federal funding for Main Street, and we got, I believe, a million 850,000 for South Prairie Street. And so we're well over $400 million in federal money, but that's just paying for the street. On both Main and on Prairie, we went into the ground and did all kinds of stuff that needed to be done because in both instances, those streets that had that pipe or whatever that we stuck down there probably well over 100 years ago. So we've really kind of brought some things into modern times and made, get some lead out of the water system. There's been a lot of progress made. But I just want to share that people say, boy, I can't believe the amount of construction we're seeing this year. Well, not quite over yet, we still got the million and a half dollar street improvement program, which I believe touches into everybody's ward, so you may get something about that work going on.
Your Honor, while you're on that and uncovering all the old stuff in the streets, I was amazed again that when we lifted all the blacktop off of Route 31, that there is so much of the original brick out there, and I don't know how old that really is. There's also a giant brick structure that's down on Main Street that they pulled out about Harrison Street, I think. It's about eight feet tall and about eight feet wide, that's all made out of stone and brick that came out of the ground. So it's amazing to see what they've uncovered this year, too.
And it's all the old sewer water systems and everything else that, you know, we've got a history of it that's been written, and most of that started about 1913. And, you know, right, World War I kind of slowed it down for a while, but then right after World War I, it really kicked into fashion. So probably 19, about 100 years ago, a lot of that stuff was put into the ground, and it's been there serving us for 100 years, and it's probably time that it does get replaced and repaired. So we really are jazzing up the community here a little bit underground with quite a bit of new stuff. The thing I would like to share is that if you watch Channel 2 News today, there was a repeated clip on about Batavia. And last night about 5:30, we had an incident up at the north dam where a couple from Geneva got themselves a pontoon boat. And apparently, they had not had much boating history with themselves, and they got themselves in the boat and started down, started floating down the river, and as it was explained to me by the fire chief, they got over by Duck Island, which is that island that's out there in the middle of the river north of the dam, and there was some mud there, and they got stuck in the mud. And so they kept gunning the engine, trying to get this pontoon boat through the mud, and it took quite a bit of gas to get it through. So they got themselves out of the mud, and then suddenly, the pontoon boat ran out of gas. And so it started going toward the east bank of the Fox River, which was a situation that was created about 1870 when we built the Challenge factory over there, because they wanted to put the building on top of a river channel, so they dug out the east bank of the Fox River there, south of the boat club. That's probably one of the deepest sections of the Fox River anywhere along the course of the river. And so the water has this natural inclination to go toward this deep area. And that's why over at our dam, if you look at the east side next to the Challenge building, that's why that's all basically been washed out, because that's where all the water has a tend, that's where all the real pressure of the river is over there on that east side. So anyway, they kept, they dialed 911 and started us in, and then when we got there, they, I believe we made it a Mavis box for rescue. And when it was over with, I don't know, I think we had eight or 12 fire departments in some form or fashion involved with us on this thing. And David Weaver, who is one of the video photographers for the Chicago News Media, is a longtime Fox Valley resident, he's an old friend of mine, and etc., so he knew exactly where to go, and he came responding in here, and he got some video of this thing that he, I guess we can show it now on the screen?
I think that what Griffin sent are the photos.
Oh, he sent the photos, okay.
Yeah.
This is stuff I took. You're going to be able to put this on the screen? Okay, if you look here, you can see the couple out in the, this is taken on the north end of the Challenge building, and this is the guy, he's gotten into the water, and he's standing there, and this female companion is standing inside the boat. And they're trying to get this out. Go to the next slide. This is what the other side of the boat looked like. And you can see the turbulence of the water here, and this boat is sitting on top of, we think, part of the top of the, maybe there's two dams there. There's an original dam built in 1860, and then there's this other newer dam built in about 1912, which is the one that, in my opinion, we need to get, get them out of there. But anyway, this boat is sitting up on some of that putting it on, the woman slipped out of it, went underneath the boat into this current and the next thing we know, she's, her head's coming up out of the water, south of the dam, floating southbound on the, into the, in the river. Now fortunately, Officer Trune from the Police Department-
Yes, and Brian DiNicolà.
Brian DiNicolà from the Fire Department. I think there was maybe somebody else, too. Ran, got themselves into the water and got her out of the water. And everybody walked away from this thing at the end. But this was a real dramatic situation and we do have, I believe, we did, were able to capture that. If nothing, I'll get Dave Weaver to send me a copy of it, but maybe I can show it to you at the next meeting. And this is another picture of it, what it looks like now with the, with the boat just sitting there. We, it's a dangerous position and we don't want to touch that boat because quite frankly, if you bring, you're going to have to bring some kind of a crane in, we think, to get it out of there. And right above it is the 34,000 KV lines for Commonwealth Edison. It's the backup line for Geneva and St. Charles. So I mean, the power there is phenomenal, so we got to be careful what we're doing there. So now the Illinois Department of Natural Resources has stepped in and they're taking it over and I guess they're kind of managing what's going to finally happen here.
My guess is the way it's sitting there in the dam, they'll come in and they'll try to come up from above it with a boat or two.
Yeah.
Hook it with a grappling hook or something and then tow it back up riverward.
Yeah.
That's how they'll get it out. I've seen boats like this stuck before.
Yeah.
And that's right where the repair was done to the dam and when the water's really low over there, that's all boulders right next to that.
Right, right.
So they actually probably got in the best place they could have to get stuck on the dam because if she would have been over 20 feet and had to go over the main part of the dam, then it's the low head roller that holds everything in behind it.
But she went in where the boulders are.
And that's all rapid, so that'll just push somebody right through.
Right, but I mean, lucky she didn't hit her head on those boulders there. I mean, I told people, I said, I was standing there and there were angels there with me. I couldn't see them, but there, I'm convinced there was some there because, man, that was, you know, and I was really worried about our own personnel because our, our men and women at the Fire Department and Police Department were trying their darndest to get this couple secured. And this was a real challenging situation. And I'm thinking that the state's thinking they're going to wait a couple of days for this river, this torrent to go down a little bit before they let somebody come in here and tow that boat out of there. So needless to say, that was our excitement for the weekend. I don't need another one like that, thank you very much.
You know, it is something that is high risk.
Absolutely.
There's frankly, a pretty low probability of it happening, but I think it's a testament to our safety personnel dedication to the training that when the time came, when they needed to use those skills, they literally jumped right in.
And, you know-
Really proud of them.
There remains in the Fox Valley a legacy that came unfortunately out of the city of Elgin where two Elgin firemen died at the dam in downtown Elgin. And it's not quite the same situation, but they had somebody who was stranded on the, on the dam. And they went into the water and the person ended up somehow breaking free and floating down the river and they got saved, but the two firemen got caught up in the turbulence of the, of the dam and they both died. And so that's been a legacy that I think every fire department on the Fox Valley remembers and really, you know, uses extreme caution because you can see what can really happen with this thing happening. So, you know, the people, I certainly am a supporter, which I know some of you are, of taking this dam out and, you know-
Working on it.
-securing the depot pond with a, some kind of a walkway that will take us over to the west bank and then put a pump in the river and pump some water on a daily basis to keep the pond in water, but then let the river just flow through Batavia without a dam. I just think that's the way to go because in my tenure here, I can think of at least two or three other times we've had deaths up at the, people either were out standing on the dam, got drunk or whatever they did and fell off. Or we had a fisherman get up there one night in the middle of the night and fell out of the boat and died. And I mean, there's, there are people saying, nothing ever happens at the dam. Well, that's not true. We have documented incidents in the records of the Fire Department of several deaths. So needless to say, right now, I'm not, I don't remain real optimistic that the state of the state finances is something that's going to quickly come in and help us correct this problem, but I think we should make a lot of noise about it and get our name on the list and get some engineering done and everything else so that we can put this thing to bed once and for all as far as having this type of situation because that water is deadly. It's the only way I can describe it that's there right now. If somebody had really, that could have, yesterday's story, as I say, there were some angels there with us because that could have been a tragic story we'd be talking about here tonight.
So the Park District will be meeting tomorrow night and I believe that the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Batavia is on their agenda for a second reading. And that agreement will be a commitment on both of our parts to engage in hiring a consultant to review the existing plans to determine whether they are still feasible. But a cool thing is that the state of Illinois has recently announced, I think about $150 million in new funding for the ITEP grants. And these types of projects fall within that. And ITEP grants can be used for all phases of engineering of a project, too. So it's not necessary that we need to have a shovel-ready project. So I have a call-in to the consultant that we've been working with on a scope of work and because as we heard from the Mahoney Creek presentation, you know, it really is in the best interest of these firms to assist municipalities in trying to successfully put forth applications for this grant money. So we'll be working on that.
So the only other thing I wanted to mention is if you haven't been by 916 Park Street recently, we've got the entire outside of it all cleaned up and we are waiting to-
Yeah, we're waiting on our environmental report to come back.
Environmental thing, because we have some environmental things we're going to have to address and it's definitely-
Shocking, I know.
I went by there and counted, there were 86 tires that had been pulled out of that yard and stacked up. In one lot, 86 tires.
Thank the fourth ward, Alderman, for your cooperation in this whole thing.
Yes.
I mean, I've already had several people up in the neighborhood tell me, thank me and the city council for doing this because that really was an issue up there. Nobody in this town should be unexpected to live next to that. So it's over with now and we're, at least the outside for the moment is clean and we'll get it taken care of, but it's in progress. So no other business, Alderman Wolf, I'd entertain a motion.
We adjourn.
Motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye.[1759.63]